The first day of January term, all members for president, Ethan B. Commissar Stone will be in order. The agenda was previously presented. The minutes from the Tuesday December thirty one twenty twenty four being read. Commissioner Stone made a motion to approve the motion. Commissioner Larson seconded the motion here. The commission discussed various boards that they sit on after review. Commissioner Bradley made a motion to appoint Commissioner Larson to the West Central Committee Action Agency and the QuadLink Board. Commissioner Larson seconded the motion. Motion passed with a roll call vote of Larson, yes, Bradley, yes, and Stone, yes. Commissioner Larson made a motion to appoint Commissioner Bradley to the University Extension Council and the Transportation Advisory Council. Commissioner Bradley seconded a motion to carry with a roll call vote of the S C C S. The group discussed part fund distribution to the townships and special road districts. Commissioner Stone explained the Bureau Bridge Program as well as soft match credits. Beth Wilson asked questions about previous commissioner meeting regarding Davis Township not disclosing public information on the attorney being used for their claim assembly ordinance as well as the attorney, as well as how the attorney is being paid. She was referred to the Missouri Attorney General's Office. The group discussed the twenty twenty five holiday schedule. There was much discussion on adding the Juneteenth holiday to the list as it is a federal and state holiday. But Rick explained that the state offices of courthouse, which include the courts juvenile office and the circuit clerk's office are closed on that day, which causes confusion with the public. As many don't realize that those offices are state offices and not county offices. After discussion, Commissioner Larson made a motion to approve the state holiday schedule including Juneteenth. Commissioner Bradley seconded the motion. Motion passed with a roll call vote of the S C C S. There was brief discussion on the upcoming County Commissioner Association of Missouri meeting as registration is due soon. First Rick began discussion on the budget process and went through various funds of the budget. He also shared now is the time of budget for hardware and software. They wanted to begin live streaming their meetings. Commissioner Larson distributed documents for hardware that would make live streaming their meetings possible. It was discussed the live feed would have to be recorded and made available. It was determined to add five thousand dollars to the commissioner's budget for the purchase of the needed software and doing research to determine costs associated with posting and recording videos on the county website. Dennis Powers, who is supervisor of the commission, he presented year end reports that stated the miles and or hours of vehicles and equipment had in twenty twenty four. He also shared that the Northwest fifteen oh one road bridge replacement in Bogart Township is almost complete. He's waiting on the weather prior to pour the decks of the bridge as well as the push work. Dennis also visited about the bridge on Southeast one hundred road in Bethlehem Township. He shared that he plans on replacing the bridge as it has a twelve ton weight limit. He is planning on getting it completed prior to the Bureau Bridge rebuild on Southeast ninety one road. He estimates that it would take about six weeks to get it complete weather permitting. Dennis shared that the arm mower is finishing up in Davis Township then moving on to Clinton Township. He shared that the arm mower does the west side of the county on evening years and the east side on odd years. He also shared that the brush hog gets around the whole county about one and a half times a year. Dennis shared that he has requested the purchase of a new duck truck in his twenty twenty five budget request. He stated that the county has replaced about twenty bridges since he has been with the road bridge department. He also shared that they have replaced numerous bridges with large pulvers. Mark Hardy, the emergency management director, shared that the First Baptist Church will have the warming center open during the next week. Should say week there. He shared that all the local churches staff the warming center and the county provides cots and works to obtain food. The group discussed the old jail and a proposal to turn it into a homeless shelter. Rick shared that the emergency management office will soon be moved to the basement of the courthouse. He stated that the records currently stored at the old jail need to be relocated hopefully close to the courthouse, then trying to get rid of the old jail as it become, as it has become costly to maintain. Assessors got a large amount of commission to explain that his office will only be able to assign the addresses to the county. He stated that the tax, the state tax commission has stated that his office is to only assess the property of the county. He shared that nine oh one central dispatch has a contractor company in Kansas that actually assigns the new addresses but through his office. He stated that the office has to reassess over five thousand properties this year and will not have time to assign addresses going forward. He continued by stating that the logical office to handle the addressing of the county properties is the assessor's offers, but he does not want another import. Scott shared some issues that constituents have with their new address. The group discussed creating a new position within the emergency management office to be responsible for the addresses of the county. After discussion, it was approved to create the position. There was more discussion on the budget process and next week's adoption of the twenty twenty five Henry County Budget. Commissioner Bradley began discussion on raises and coles given to employees at the time in which the employee receives the increase. He gave an example of an employee that began to work for the county in December but won't receive a cola until his anniversary date. Rick explained that the county began to give employees their raises on their anniversary date. It is unfair to give everyone a raise at the same time of year specifically January one where they worked for the county only one month or eleven. He also shared that the county began the anniversary date pay increase a few years ago. In the first year of that change, all employees were given half of their annual raise on January one, then the remainder of the raise on their anniversary date as they were accustomed to receive the raise on the first day of the new year. The group discussed the annual township special road district meeting hosted by the commission. The commission, or Commissioner Stone, should say Commissioner Stone, stated the date of the meeting is up to them. The set, the group briefly discussed purchasing a road trader as some road districts are having difficulty finding an operator. Commissioner Larson shared that he would like to change the contract to give the township and special road districts more flexibility in using the funds. He stated that they are required by statute to use the money for specific purposes. Commissioner Stone stated that there would have to be some accountability as to how they use the funds. Dennis Powers stated that he did not want to eliminate the cart rock program. Rick shared that they only had, or they had only discussed the stipulations on the program, not necessarily eliminating it. Dennis shared that he would suggest that the revised cart contract will require ditches, still require ditches to be pulled. He also stated that we would like to see it similar in past contracts. Dennis shared that he received a call from a road on bridge inspector. The inspector stated that he will be sending him a list of bridges that must have rocks swept off the bridge decks. And has further stated that this needs to be done prior to the February bridge inspection. Dennis asked how the commission wants to address the townships and special road districts to get these bridges cleaned off. Commissioner Larson advised Dennis to call them and tell them that they have until Wednesday next week to get the bridge deck swept off or the county will do it and charge them a hundred fifty dollars each. Dennis stated that he would give them a call, but be prepared for some phone calls from the respective townships or special road districts. There was discussion on withholding cart funds or gas tax distribution from townships and special road districts that are in arrears of setting up on various invoices from the county. And twelve week, Commissioner Bradley made a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Larson seconded the motion. Group and motion carried with a roll call vote of yes, yes, yes.
additions or corrections? I entertain a motion. First man may accept the previous minutes as presented with a few corrections. If you have any favorites, say aye. Motion carried.
All right, I did ask Chuck to come and visit you guys about the recording. And he is our RTI. I don't know if you know.
You know Jeff.
I know. Yeah, Jake, I know Jake, but yeah. Nice to meet you. So I understand we're wanting to livestream. There's a couple of issues with livestream. Number one, as I understand it, you have to hold those livestreams forever. So you've got storage issues you're gonna have to deal with eventually. It's not gonna become a problem right away. And the way storage grows, by the time the equipment dies, it's gonna be twice as big anyway, so issue keep up pretty good. You all aren't doing like eight hour long or ten, you know, every single day. So that's a fairly small issue. Your equipment is gonna be the real question. Now, Rick found a unit kind of designed for that for about two thousand bucks. I wasn't able to find any reviews on that talking about its longevity. And my industry's recommendation is closer to ten to twenty thousand dollars. They want you all to have basically dedicated cameras for each person in all directions and then let your microphones do the auto switching. But that's a much longer term setup. Now, the real question, when he asked me to give you a recommendation I want to buy, two thousand dollars over twenty? If the darn device works pretty good, then I'd say that's a way to go. But long term, I'm not gonna put my stamp or go on cheaper advice just because I wasn't able to find any, anything suggesting that's gonna last that kind of time. So I think for the money, this little two thousand dollar box here is probably worth trying because even if you get, say, four years out of that box and replace it every forty years, you're still not anywhere near twenty grand by the time it's twenty thousand dollars. And that right there is just your camera, so to speak. So you're gonna have a couple thousand dollars in your camera, a couple thousand dollars in storage, and then you're getting a new computer system up here which may or may not handle doing all the things that computer needs to do to show whatever Kelly's planning on doing to that. Add livestream, you may wind up having to add a dedicated livestream box, so another sixty, eight hundred bucks.
What if we're not gonna livestream and just gonna film it and then upload it to?
It wouldn't make much difference. It'll either handle the little box and recording and doing what it needs to do or whatnot. So the livestream portion is just getting that video into the network. And the other high or thing to consider is how are you gonna get this to the public? So if you wanna self-host these videos and just have them stay on server for the public to download, you've got a lot more infrastructure you're gonna have to manage, come up with. There's a lot, much longer process. If you livestream, say, straight to YouTube or just upload the videos to YouTube and let YouTube do your management, now you're not having to worry about infrastructure, security, and all the things that come with having your own platform. Let some other platform do that for you. And as far as I know, there is no cost to do that through YouTube. And when Kelly updates the website for today's meeting, she could just link the YouTube video that she's uploaded as soon as, as soon as it's available.
The way this has been done.
Yep. So you. And is this going to YouTube currently?
Well, what it will be, the old video of this, take it back, trust me, I'm not a tech guy. Actually, that's him.
Excellent.
So then what they do is they just take it straight there, load it to.
Yeah, just upload it to Facebook.
Oh, Facebook.
Yeah.
So I'm not a fan of Facebook for any sort of public service, anything, because Facebook chooses who gets to see what when. I get things that are three or four days old that were important three or four days ago. I hate it. When make, Facebook made that change, I just don't like it as a platform. But it doesn't really matter where it goes as long as people know where to go. Because if they go to your Facebook page, they'll be able to find it. But as far as getting alerts that it was uploaded, it's.
Do we have, does the county have a Facebook page? I mean, cause I know, I know a lot of the counties actually do have their Facebook page. And a lot of people get a lot of their information off of that.
There is, I think Sheriff's Office has a.
They got it one page.
The Circuit Clerk's Office.
Yeah, the Circuit Clerk's.
I mean, and the reason I'm saying that is even like Jim, when we were trying to figure out all of this yesterday, whether to open this or close this, after we made that decision and Rick was able to tell the people that work here, the people that don't work here, they would have never known unless they come up here. So if we put this in to like we said, and like I said, guys, I don't know anything about this. I'm just, it just sounds like a good idea. That if we have our own Henry County.
Facebook.
Facebook page, like when you, once you, you got that, you could put, I mean, whether it's you or whoever runs it, could put it out there and then ever, because social, I mean, I hated it. I gotta tell you, I didn't really like, I've never been a big fan of it. But that's the way things are going now. If you wanna find something out, that's pretty much how you find it out. So I'm just wondering, that would solve at least not only the emergency system, but would have, what happened yesterday would probably never happen again. Ten, fifteen years, have weather like this to where you're gonna shut stuff down.
Well, I'd say that, but it seems like here the last few years, we had, had two thousand eleven, we had to shut it down.
A lot more ice than that was.
Right, that's it. But just like that, my big thing yours is tough. And it's a bad situation because we're talking about when we shut down the courthouse, when you really get to looking at it, you got about eleven, twelve feet that you're shooting in the hood. The rest of them have to come and work, just like the bridge bar and bars. They all came in, worked all day, all the sheriff's department works all day. It adds, just figure the cost of all that stuff. That's the only reason for some of that, because now.
Charles just said that you don't like Facebook as a platform. What's the safest platform?
Well, actually, you're gonna reach the most people probably through Facebook because that's what everybody's using. Twitter is an example of a system that when you subscribe to a Twitter feed and you post on Twitter, you're gonna get that notification if something happened where Facebook again. If you had posted this yesterday that the courthouse is closed, fifty percent of those people wouldn't see it till today. Five percent would see it tomorrow and, you know, someone saw it yesterday. That's why I don't like it for, like when schools try to use that, that's the one that I really get angry with because my kids are in school, I need that information right now. And then I don't get that information until ten days later that there's something going on. Facebook was just the wrong platform to use as a notification.
Yeah, I, I did contact K D K D. I don't know if they put it on their Facebook page, but that's how I notified them is I sent them a message.
You, you did go to K D K D.
Yeah, I did send.
And I don't have a better answer, I'm just saying.
No, you're fine.
Because that's what I was curious about. I don't like it.
Yeah.
The worst thing about Facebook there is people that don't take it.
Right.
And still want it, that's the big thing. But then they get in a little group stage, so that's.
Well, it's too bad you can't be listed as like a public service and then when you post something, everybody gets it every time instead of the.
That's what things happen.
Yeah.
If you're gonna do it.
Can't, but then that's charged.
Have y'all done any of that?
Yeah, you can promote your.
Y'all do it, y'all in there?
No.
You know? We. Have you tried it?
No.
I think I'd be good for even the people in the township.
If you don't, well, actually, it would be.
Cause you can just agree out of that.
Most, most people don't pay any attention to what moves on in those rooms. You can't get anybody to get on it, much less appear there to see something.
Some of the things we've done now, Rick, I was, I thought a long time ago, we and us county and counties was big. And Rick put it out. And what was it, how was twenty five, there was three? That's why he was reading this form. I was looking at, now, have all the people and then some of them that you talked to and I got thinking, before we jump in, let's go to the commission, C camp, cause now all that's commissioned. And for one time now, it's right there in there is a, they usually have a place to question and answer. They have all the questions without the state asking how they do it. I know a lot of any of Plaistock County counties, some of the big counties. I'm sitting here doing all them, you know, I'm sure all of them do it. The thing, I know, I, there's some other counties that it depends on what's hot. And it depends on how they work, like down in Springfield, I wouldn't have heard of them doing the community thing. That's a huge major deal, right? To be in a place like Georgia, the way they do their, because that's the way the commission, and it's set up. Because then you have to have your mind up what you do. The thing is, what I'm worried about is just like. If we haven't any work sessions, because what I worry about is if we're just talking, not necessarily, we're not making any decisions, just giving information, just like here, it's fine, it's okay. Which has to be awful careful because then other people, if you put the wrong word out, they'll take it in different context. That's what I'm saying.
I mean, to a point, because if it's on video, I mean, if you, you're sitting there and you hear us talking and you can't understand what we're saying.
The thing is.
Who's lost that? I mean, seriously, I mean, it's more, I, but I understand what you're saying, it's talking back and forth. Until we actually say we're gonna take a vote on it, nothing is written in the study. Nothing.
I agree. But they allow people to take it, you know what?
But that's up to them. Jim, one thing we don't wanna do, we don't wanna take everything down to the lowest common denominator. And that's what you're doing. That, that's, all we need to do is what is right, what is out there, what, how you interpret it is, that's up to you. That's up to you, that's not us, until we vote. We're just talking. We're just talking.
I guess the next thing is.
I mean, can, can I ask one thing?
Yeah.
Because you're, you're just a citizen.
Fly on the wall.
I mean, if you're sitting there and you, you've been, I mean, I know you come here a lot and you see everybody, they go back and forth and talk and what. You don't take it that this is what we're gonna do until we vote, do you?
No.
We're talking about.
I recognize it as a process.
He does.
Thought process.
Well.
And the other issue is that this is much more, has been in the past, I don't know what direction you're gonna be going in, but it's been very informative. And if I can't hear you, I'll say something. If you're mumbling, I'll say something. I didn't, and I don't understand what you're talking about, I'll ask a question, I'll just speak up. Now, you pull that at city council, that's not gonna happen, do you?
See, and I, I don't think that's right, but I think you're gonna alleviate that when you have speakers. You're going to hear exactly what's being said.
Well, even when they do their mics over there, you're, you get three minutes.
Right.
You can't just speak up from the crowd if you're not following something. That happens a lot, actually, I've had to ask them, I've had to ask, I would have liked to ask city council, what are you talking about?
Right. And you should.
Because it doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, you, I mean, my, my idea, I don't, I don't wanna make this formal, you know, where it's like everybody's still, this is a community. So it doesn't matter if there's twenty people coming in there. I mean, can you let everybody speak for ten or fifteen minutes? No, you just can't do. But I also think we are all working, we're out here. So if you have a question, you should be able to ask that, not in a necessarily formal setting, but it has to be controlled, I guess. So.
Well, even when they're controlled, Arcata City Council in California, they have fifty people show up and they all got three minutes. Those out, those meetings went into one o'clock in the morning.
Right, right. But I don't think you're ever gonna have that.
And they were just saying the same thing over and over.
Right.
So you need to have some kind of control.
The beauty of it though is we live in a small community. You're not gonna have that issue. I mean, if you got ten people, then you're so was wrong, honestly. I mean, how many times have you come here and you've been wanting to sit here?
That was the first question was asked when I first showed up. Do you have something to comment about?
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, the object is to make it very transparent, but very simple.
Sure.
And whatever, and economical, because we don't wanna spend the money, you know, that money could be spent someplace else, maybe better. But we're gonna have to, guys, I'm just telling you, from, when Jake and I ran, they want transparency, big time. And the only way you're going to get that is to be accountable right now, right when you, we're talking. You know, Jim and I, if you're talking and just, even if we're just BSing.
Yeah.
That, so be it, we're human. That, that, it doesn't have to be a formal setting one hundred percent. I mean, you've gotta stay within bounds. But I just think you're gonna have less problems. I think everything's gonna be more out in the open if we do something like this. Now, that thing I gave you guys, I mean, I honestly don't care what we do with that. I just, what, you, you, you're an IT guy. You're an IT guy, that's way out of my league.
So I had a call out before I got here, so my brain's still over there. There, there is two other things, so. The actual, my, my actual recommendation, if this system doesn't work, is to go to Zoom meetings. Each of you can have a camera on your computer. Zoom will automatically switch to whoever's talking and it will allow you to upload it to your platform or choice, Facebook.
They do, they're all, they're everybody.
Yeah. And the cost of that is, it's gonna be, call it a thousand dollars per station.
Yeah.
And you're gonna want one for the public. But the long term, that's an eight to ten year solution. That's gonna work for a long time, it's gonna be easy to repair, it's not proprietary or anything. And the cost to do that is gonna be thirteen dollars a month after you buy your program. So Zoom would be, if this solution isn't it, Zoom is the way to go. And then the only other thing, and I don't know how rules work in this room, y'all can just make things up and people gotta stick with it, but you cannot have copyrighted music in here. That will, that will get your videos taken down on all platforms and have your accounts suspended. You do not use, so you gotta have some sort of rule for copyrighted music, because it's, it's insane if that'll get you in trouble.
Is it just music or is it all copyrighted stuff?
It's copyrighted, you know, anything that you're gonna hear on the radio, basically, so.
One of the things, Aaron, and think about it, just like in some of it, they don't say you're not clear, being that proof comes, just like when you talk about a big company wanting to come in, just like this same situation, you have to go in a closed session with this. Now, and part of that is because of that, well, sunshine law, same as an attorney, an attorney's present, you have to be in closed session. You can't leave it, just like, and it doesn't matter, just like employees. Now, say you don't wanna talk about something, you have an employee, you're mentioning a name. And you've got, you can get you butt in trouble, I'm sure that's made that, and so you have to watch out. And that's, and after a while, just like Bruce, some of the stuff there, find out, really what we're saying would be open and doesn't matter, but in his case, just like here, you can't do that according to what the sunshine laws are. And if somebody wants to bring it up, you can really get in trouble. Now, you'll find, in fact, some of the deal, now let's see, I'm sure they'll probably bring that out this year. But that's some of the things that you have to think about, and I do think about that because first thing said when you're videoing and you have to go in a closed session. I'm sorry, we have to go in a closed session for a little bit, what's people say, they're hiding everybody. And, but some of that has to be.
I think as long as you tell people, you, you, you just don't say, we're gonna go in a closed session and discuss something. You can tell them, we have an employee that we need to discuss. Now everybody knows that we're not talking, and I, I get that, you shouldn't be talking about something.
And what about your attorneys that you call and you talk to, ask them a question, legal question?
Is that actually a reason to go into a, I mean, is that what the statute says? That you can go in just to ask an attorney a question?
You can or you have to? You can, you can.
You can, okay, because my, my question, I mean, I know whenever you're getting ready to buy real estate or there, there are various things like that that you actually do do. But that, that, I'd have to read that statute again because.
Any legal matter.
Any legal matter with the county. And that's just like, like I said, when you're talking about, just like in steel companies, very few companies talk to a commission. Most of it, you'll hear about it after the fact. That's kinda like some other things going on, we don't know anything about it. And it may be out in the county, but we still don't know anything about it until something comes up. And it can be somewhere else. And this particular deal was actually what they has done is put the taxes into the tax, and that's reason. That, that's reason, and that's some of the cases there that I wanna make sure that we, we really did clear that, gotta make it work. But I hate to bring it up because that can really mess the county, the county up, because a lot of towns, if you did, they're wrong.
Yeah, it's six, ten, twenty one, paragraph one, legal actions, positive action, litigation is all that public government body can make in any confidential privileged communications between the public government body or its representatives. That's, that's the first reason.
That's all the things there. You have things, and then when you, when you're getting on there, then cut it off, first thing you do, I, I don't know how to say it. Just like if you're gonna talk to a attorney, they'll say the same thing.
Well, that's just it, you're not gonna be able to change that.
No.
But you, but, but you are giving them everything out one hundred percent.
Cause just like normally, anybody that comes in or anyway, that does anything, you ask Bruce there, we're not, we're not, we don't get a little huddle, I'll go back and forth. We just don't do that, and I can't help it, I wouldn't even wanna be here, we're gonna do something like that. But I do, there are certain times when you need a visit, just like getting everything out before you put it out to the public. You wanna be careful because then if you change one little item, you don't hear about it. You wanna be careful, because then if you change one little item, you're gonna hear about it. That'd be my, that's all legal orders I got. But I think, my big thing is, I think, before we jump, let's get all their information, and February's coming up here pretty quick, and we'll go seek him, and we'll just ask, and you get a good, that gives you good consensus, high level, because you gotta hold them tight as a county, that you deal with. And if you do that, we often be able to get a good feel on once a best way, and once a best way done, because that's the next thing is getting it out to public. You can say, put it on Facebook, but you, you also want, it's like Facebook, but you can shut that off pretty quick. That's what we're saying. I wanna put it off, it's coming in there, and you don't have to worry about it. I like it. Maybe the Zoom, maybe the best, you do too, because then you got everybody right there.
Same idea, but I do have a couple of other questions for some people.
Yeah.
The Zoom will, actually, I think I perform better, because you've got a microphone, and it's right in front of the, the main votes. This one out here, you're gonna wanna use a room mic.
So you, you, but in order to, because we use Zoom in our office, for various things. So you've gotta send out something to everybody that allows them to get on to that.
Yeah, so your clerk will be the one that, that does the scheduling, so that's the person that's licensed, thirteen dollars a month, and then they can invite, you know, maybe there, even the public could be in on that if they want, and they could get on a list, and when she hits the submit button, it pops up on everybody's computer, you join the meeting and.
See, cause that's, 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 I mean, that, that is the crux of the issue. The public is the one that wants it. It's not like we don't need him, and him, and him, and him.
Well, that would be bad.
We want the whole public to have access to it, which seems like that's gonna be a whole lot of work to invite, unless there's, and I'm like, I don't know anything about this.
Yeah.
So if you invite the whole county to this Zoom meeting.
Well, we're doing one tomorrow.
We can do up to three thousand people for, for that thirteen dollars a month. So, and if somebody wants to get on, you know, the list, there's no reason there can't be a list, and it could be very simple for that to function. And they're just gonna have to get used to the different processes you all go through, closed sessions or whatever, and then.
Exactly. I don't wanna add more work, you know what I'm saying?
I like the YouTube process better.
I tell you, it's gonna be easier. Simple, yeah. I really do, because the Zoom.
Well, and Zoom, let's call it, in this case, Zoom not as in Zoom, the product that you can do your meetings with.
Yeah.
We're talking about Zoom as a replacement for the video conferencing, because Zoom can upload directly to YouTube. So you would still use YouTube as your platform or anything, and then you're using Zoom to get there. So.
So we have, if we did purchase the camera system that's just on the counter.
Yep.
It would be connected to the computer under here.
That's correct.
And when you go live, you just, you're like, login to YouTube.
You hit go live, and it says, what camera, and you select that one, yeah. Which is basically what you're gonna do if you did it with Zoom, where you say, go live, and the camera is Zoom, and both you have this one on top of you, so essentially, the same. I understand this is a budget meeting primarily, so I'll budget five thousand for that camera system, and you get to where you're ready to make that decision, that's an extra computer if you need it, and that camera system, and hopefully you don't need the extra computer, but you'll budget it for us, so. Give a thousand dollars to give to the sheriff firm. Aren't you mad?
No, don't be saying that. Watch that guy over there. Any other questions?
No, I don't, I don't.
Yep, okay.
No. All right. Thank you, Jack.
Yep.
Do the public hearing now, that was supposed to be at nine thirty.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm gonna grab extra chairs.
Okay, uh, when we put this book together, um, it was the end of last year, so the difference that you will see in what was approved at that time in the new book, is all the actual activity that happened between thirty-first of, uh, not, the twenty-third of December to today. So all the actual numbers are input in here. In addition to the difference in this book and that book is, I put, uh, cell phone for you guys. I also added ten thousand for the hardware for the live streaming, gives you a little more flexibility, doesn't mean I spent it, but it's there if it's, if it's needed. Um, we'd also change prosecutors', uh, deputies' wages between this book and that book. Uh, we changed emergency management, um, the assistant, who's getting twenty hours, uh, a week versus what he was getting, uh, last year, plus we added the mapper to, to this book or that book. Um, and then in adding the mapper, we also had to change the budget for employee benefits, which included the county's portion of the FICA, the county's portion of SURF, and the county's portion of health insurance, so I added another ten thousand. Uh, we modified numbers for the Bureau bridges, because I was using incorrect numbers. We had to change numbers for the sheriff's budget, because he spent a lot. When we cast out the budget worksheets to everybody, we give them the cash balance, what their expected revenues, and what their expected expenses are, um, and at the last, part of last year, the sheriff purchased a lot of bulletproof vests, which destroyed his cash balance. So he didn't have as much money to work with this year, because, because of that, so.
We, hopefully we got that handled.
Well, I, not out of his mind, that came out of different, so we had to reduce his, uh, expense for costs out of that because of his cash basis. And then we had to change the retirement fund because of that, uh, mapper. So there was a few changes in here, um, but I think it's all been accounted for. Um, if you guys had any questions or wanna come through. Uh, we publicized that, you know, it was available for public viewing in the office, nobody came in, but we also put it on the website, and I don't know if people actually clicked on it to review that.
On that one? And nobody's living there.
Anybody else have, somebody else wanna comment on a budget? Seven percent, during the joint motion, except for budget. Two thousand twenty-five, most of their main segment except the, uh, budget for two thousand twenty-five, uh, voice roll call, Mark?
Yes.
Jake?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
There should be a page in that, if you guys sign on. So in this report, it pretty much gives you an idea of, it's basically a financial statement in the beginning, because it tells you what all last year's activity was. The county is, is only, only owes up one and a half million dollars on the jail. Uh, we started out with, uh, what do they, so we're down to one and a half. You may not know, but we refinanced that in twenty sixteen, that saved the county about a million dollars in interest payments. Um, to do that, we, uh, we had to pay down, uh, the tax, so we put, I don't wanna say two million dollars towards the refinance, but saved money. And also cut the length of, of them by, by a year. Also in here, it shows. That the county used, uh, eight hundred and twenty-two thousand of federal money, and we can spend over seven hundred and fifty at triggers an audit. So, um, we are preparing to do an audit for twenty-three and twenty-four, so we, we spent that money in, uh. There'll be a bid opening for our auditor next week. The only other thing I have is fiddles, the only thing we had time process goes.
Yeah, good, very good.
Good, good.
That bridge bed, get a little bit, don't you?
Yep, we do. About ten minutes. Uh, Leslie or Zach, Lindsay, 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 Zach, they should be here.
What?
You need anything, just come in.
I've just come in on the bridge.
Okay.
Bed open.
Yep. Coming up, we're waiting for Lindsay or Lindsay and Zachary, I don't know which one to be here, great members, that's who. Good morning, Scott.
How you doing today?
Good. Stayin' warm.
Lindsay coming today, dude?
Lindsay's not coming today, sir.
It's you.
Just me, her truck, uh, window, wouldn't stay out.
Oh, really?
That'd be a cold drink.
God, that'd be horrible. Can you bring me tab sheets with me?
I did. Only got three more.
How you doing today?
Very good.
Oh, Zach. I don't think I have this, Mark, Mark, Mark loves this. Jake, right, Jake, right.
Yeah, usually it's me and Lindsay.
Yeah. Gregor is an engineer, that's all. We do in a brief.
And we have submitted, uh, PSNE on the other one as well, so.
I need to sign.
We have submitted PSNE.
Everybody needs to sign that, I'm, I'm not bidding, I mean, I'm just here observing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Get back in there.
Yep.
Yeah. That's my road where the, the bridge.
Oh, there, right.
Oh, you're a landowner? Yes. Well, I'm on the county check board also.
Sorry, what road is this?
People's wanting to know what's going on.
Wasn't much problem, are you guys getting here today?
Not bad.
I left at five thirty.
Okay.
I was worried I wasn't gonna get here on time, but once I got west of there, it got a lot better.
Sixty-five, they still covered one of these, they're on it.
I don't know why it's lying down toward Springfield.
I don't, we got John Mulder, but I just talked landowner down there, and he resolved it, but he said he didn't think they got much snow down there. Didn't get near that, I said, probably not.
Supposed to be out there nine in the morning, so.
Should be good.
Hopefully, we all right.
We get some more chairs.
Yeah.
Cool house today. He's cleaning out these hardware. Where you guys at?
My at, Nelson.
Nelson, sir. After those two people fell over there. Is that where the company's from?
Lawrence Mill. He's got a sheet there, he's got, he's got that address on there. Okay. Okay, goodbye.
I don't think Kale Seymour's gonna come today, but I think we're starting to get enough benefit down till then. Also, we don't know if these guys have submitted bids.
I've not received any bids.
Oh, no, just Mira, is that it?
You're in CNC.
Yeah, Bill, Kittle's father-in-law's getting a house today.
I doubt it. Is that what he is?
I believe so. I'm making, we're actually down at Ballard, we got two years to go, looking at a job, and he's there at the same time, I'm talking to him for a while, I'm pretty sure he's had a moment.
Nice dog, yeah.
He's getting around considerably better that day.
Right.
Y'all done some bridges for us.
Huh?
Y'all done some bridges.
I think I've done a couple, yeah. Been there several years, I can't even remember where they's at.
Well, I'm not sure. We didn't get a whole lot of snow. We got plenty of ice.
Got a bunch of ice in front of the snow, did you?
And after.
Lost my power down there.
You know what? Flickered there the other night. And our, they flickered two or three times, but just flickered off and.
There was a bunch of water cooper handle off, didn't it? That one never did move fast. They had all the generators ready and.
I was out for about five hours. Just enough time to get everything hooked up.
Yeah.
Good to go, and then everything come back on. That's what they was, they was talking about.
I think I feel sorry for them that day, gee.
Oh, I wouldn't have been a job, had a terrible.
It would've been terrible. I said that was football. I bet cows enough there on their own.
Last day just getting ready for the cold then, yes or another day and. So far it's worked, water's all, you got a lot of water, some of them you don't have here, so.
Right.
But so far, I could hang around them and it works pretty good.
Right.
Get them to bed damn by the water, you're alright, they don't heat off.
I've got all electric order, some work's alright for me. You keep rough work, you know, there's always something going out.
No, they usually, don't have much trouble with it. I don't know anybody.
There's usually about a half a dozen, there's usually one a year you gotta do something to.
Yeah.
An elevator or thermostat or something.
Have y'all been bus- busy on bridges?
Well, the last couple of years got slow, everyone finding out work around everybody.
When we first started, it was, it had, getting ready.
Well, there's somebody coming now, it's unbelievable.
Yeah. Now they're, they're getting ready, well, we've got forty of them to look at tomorrow. Grade anyway and.
Well, they're still bidding out that first package too, you know?
And I don't know what Modot's gonna give, they haven't put out how much. We're supposed to go down and move them all in the box, but anyway, I don't know. I don't know if they're gonna, there'll be a bunch out there.
Well, I know, that's unreal, they're, they're gonna run out of contractors.
We're, we're working on bridges right now, then we got, we got the bid and last of twenty-one, twenty-two. And then just now, this one's going out for bid.
No kidding?
No kidding.
So this ain't even in that package with the stimulus money?
Uh, no, this was a part of the.
First round?
Yeah.
And then, then we turn around and then naturally we got another one yet. Out here on ninety-one, but guess what? Uh, that one's still yet to come in, and I think it's getting closer. When we were running a lot of permits, his program, and a lot of government, and getting the permits. And I don't know what happened, but I think them and, maybe I kinda got any hot corn or something. They're slow, but. That's been the issue.
We did just clear, we did just finally clear that core land permanent.
Now we should be able to start moving on the bid.
It's only taken about six, eight months. It's only, yeah.
That's alright, just for the, to get the permit.
At first they told us it'd be a full year.
Yep.
That's on the one you're getting ready to bid here?
Well, this one's been out since uh twenty-two, first one due.
Yeah.
And now we're bidding it, the other one we're not, hopefully it'll be ready to bid here pretty quick, so like, cause we got the permit. So these guys are, you know, working on it, they got to do them both. We'll see what happens. I don't know what'll happen on these, I don't think, if we get a couple, that'd be great, but I'm hoping. It depends on whether Modot puts out.
Sixty-five?
You guys gonna announce that?
Anyway, some turn offs sixty-five, there's three targets like that. Guess they don't know what the problem was.
Yeah, I don't know after that. From the jet city, down to California, that's all four of them. The handling wasn't, it was just less than, so you couldn't pass a lady and stacked up my cordwood the whole way. Bid, I'll go home that way then.
Yeah, I bet he didn't clear.
Windsor, since we did that a few years ago, see how that rides. Tore that bridge out there itself, one of the dead box.
So, when are you guys first days?
What's? Then we going to the uh LIP.
Yeah, you wrote, you wrote Elks on one and.
I'm, I'm gonna check.
String, but you didn't either place.
Well, it'd always work up the Elks. But I think one of them may go through, I put it in, and just hold the back of it up, usually it works. Now flip it over for the other. I don't know what happened anyway, I couldn't get in. You wouldn't let me in, Nancy. Now, I was talking.
Let me pull down any unoperated one.
I think I'm ready.
Am I ready? Alright, well, thank you guys for coming. Uh, we're gonna open up spiz for Henry County Bridge two-six-seven zero-zero-three-one. Sorry, CNC. Alright, CNC bids six hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars and zero cents. That is six hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, four hundred and eighty-nine and zero cents. Next we'll go Mira Construction. Mira Excavating, sir. Mira bids six hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixteen cents. That is six hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, one hundred and seventy-three and sixteen cents.
What was your estimate on that thing?
Uh, engineer's estimate was. Six hundred and twenty-one thousand, fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Six hun- six hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents.
Got you to bid.
Mira Excavating is the current load bidder, we will, we will review these for accuracy and we'll send out notes to award them any week.
We'll still be DB, everything.
Will be DBE and subcontractor. Thank you guys for your interest.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
Have a good day.
See you.
Thank you. You got more coming, ain't you?
Oh, yeah.
Better raise your estimate.
I think we got a few already going, it's gonna be okay. That is northwest four hundred, just out of here.
Has one on ninety-one been there yet?
Yes, or not bid, but we've just, we just submitted PSNE plans, specs and estimate to Modot, so they're gonna review it now, they have about a month. After that, we have to put it in the paper and on Modot's website for another twenty-one days or so. Realistically, that's gonna be now, a month or two months.
So I probably got time to do some review, but wait for the bridge before.
Thank you all.
They get in there and start working on that bridge.
South of it, or I, I didn't think there is.
It'd be east of it. There's a way on the bridge out there.
Thinking you can get that repaired in under two months, or? You should be able to then, I mean, I don't think there's too much traffic going through there anyway, and there's no reason for them to go through there, cause they're not gonna be able to go north even when we start construction.
Okay. I was just curious.
I got a question, that's, that, that bridge is, is supposed to be about, I live on that road there, four hundred road.
South, uh, southeast four, oh, no, northwest four hundred road. Which, which property, maybe I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
Well, I live east of that bridge there, I'm just, I'm on township board.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, that's supposed to be how many feet long, a hundred feet long? When do they expect to start?
Ninety foot long, um, we're gonna at the mercy of when they want to start, um, we did give, we did give them till. December thirteenth to complete the project, but once they start, they have ninety days.
That's all you have.
I mean, that's just what we have, that's just what we run into to get competitive bids in this time, is just contractors, we have to open that window and they put it in, but once they start, they have ninety days. So it's about ninety foot bridge, a single span. Sorry, I don't have those plans with me, but you'll just, you won't be able to go uh straight west, you'll have to go south.
Yeah.
Down and around.
Well, we've been doing that on county.
Unposted, yeah.
I mean, everything's semi.
Right, so everything should, so that blue bridge should not have any load posting, it should be for only legal loads. So as long as your vehicle's legal, you. Should be able to drive, about thirty-six tons for a dump truck.
For what?
Uh, a dump truck.
About semi has more than thirty-six tons.
Well, it, it has more axles now.
It's run out over and over.
I guess, so when, was that your question, when do they expect to start?
Yeah.
Will, when uh, we'll send that out, we'll ask them. He said, he just whispered, I'll give you ready in February if the review.
Give me ready in February.
Well, that sounds good.
That'd be good.
Ninety days, cause that's, well, I mean, we're using semis to get ready for farming. Like, I've got two of my own.
Well, old Bill, you might have to start hauling it, if you pick it. Bill getting around, that's the big thing, is if we can get weather permitting.
Yeah, way out.
You know what happens spring of the year too?
Yeah.
If it does, but hopefully.
How wide is that bridge?
Twenty-four feet of driving width.
Oh, the old one's eighteen and some of the equipment.
It's too big, too little. In fact, I'm beginning to wonder on some of the uh twenty fours, someone's gonna be tired after a little bit.
I mean, combines now, we think.
Everything's just getting bigger and wider.
Yeah, your combine, it's like, it's family.
It's right at eighteen all.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, I mean, if he crosses the bridge now, he's gotta watch.
Yeah, you're doing just fly across.
Uh, son does most of the driving now, once in a while I get stuck.
What you saying there?
What's a combine weigh when it's full?
Oh, oh, it weighs when it's full, I don't know, it holds almost four hundred bushels.
Yeah.
So with that bridge, surely engineers handle that.
Yeah, twenty-two thousand. Of course, you don't want to go down.
All legal lifting.
See if.
Permits to haul more than that. This construction equipment.
Oh, yeah.
What's your truck weigh when you got your track loader on it?
Dude, I did this.
What is it?
A lot, a lot, I really don't know.
Track, the track hold weighs fifty-six thousand.
Yeah.
Fifty-six, uh, you're over eighty.
Yeah.
That's how we test the strength of our bridges, try that big equipment over, to see how much it bends.
That mormax is pretty heavy.
It's not, it's twenty-eight thousand, twenty-eight thousand, something like that.
And this new, it's gonna be.
What's your truck and trailer weigh, you know?
It's around. Twenty-eight, it's uh.
I promise you, no doubt, people don't know what they weigh.
I don't think my brain's ready to worry about twenty, one's twenty-six and the other's twenty-seven.
When you leave there is when you start worrying about theirs or mine. So with that, I'm gonna go review these, make sure they got everything submitted, and then we'll get in touch with you guys.
Okay. Are you ready to start?
What was the name of that company, getting up the bid?
Mira.
Mira?
M E R A.
Bonnet's Mill, Missouri.
Where?
Bonnet's Mill, Missouri, out uh, the side of Jeff City. You was pretty good on how much?
Thank you.
How much amount of courses I've seen on them?
I've gotten a little closer one time.
Really?
Has made one million twenty-six thousand dollars, came at one million twenty-seven and change. I've never felt so good in my life.
We just, they still there were two, the two that, that we were bidding. We just had a change. They, they upped it quite a bit.
So, in the ballpark.
Yeah.
Seems worse, but.
Y'all got a lot closer now, thought you would've been on that, as long as it's been.
Yeah, no, it's, it's been a while, we've seen actually a bit, quite a bit competitive bids recently.
Maybe.
Yeah, so I don't know just what's going on.
We better get them all bidded, get, get them going here before we lose it.
We've seen about two, two to four bidder, bidders per a lot of these county, county bridges, so. We're, we are seeing competitive bids at least in this area.
The seven's a big bridge, bro.
Yeah, this one on one ninety-one, I think it's gonna be one oh one.
Yeah.
Single, single span. Core, the core is good with it, so. They've been our biggest hurdle. They've been nice to deal with, they just take whatever, they just take whatever.
Are they gonna raise that or lower or?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna raise it to, I, there's, there's a, there's a sign just south of the bridge, I think some warning sign or whatnot, about that elevation, so we are gonna raise the bridge, but it's still gonna come down to the roadway level, elevation, so. You know, when the lake comes up, it's still gonna come up, okay, there's nothing we can do to stop that lake comes up, but, but at least we're gonna try to keep that bridge deck as best we can.
When lake gets full, it doesn't kind of go, just fix it on the ridge.
It doesn't?
No. When the, river get down.
I know whether the core has modeled that lake board during high flood events is like twenty feet above that, sixty degree temperature elevation, so. We're kinda running off of A L R as well, sorry. As long as I think it's gonna depend on that lake, how hard, how high it gets up as well. But no, I think, so, thank you guys very much, nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Zach. See you guys. Thank you guys.
Bill, you got your bridge?
That sounds good.
Hopefully get it down and out of your hair.
I'll go quick, yeah, I'm gonna ask Mr. Larson a question.
Yeah.
Concerning your township or your, your district there, your zoning. Why don't zone, but we need to upgrade it? What did you use for attorney or anything like that?
That actually, ours, ours, because I'm with ones are special. They haven't redone theirs. That's, and that was done back in ninety-five.
Yeah, something like that.
My son got a bunch of that zoning stuff together. I know he did it for Tivo. The guy that he used, actually his name was Ted Beckett. I know there's, there's a couple of different people that are using different ones. But if you wanna give me your name and number, I will have Chase call ya, and he can, he can tell you exactly. That was more his part, he was the one who was dealing with that planning and so.
Okay, yes, I like that. My name's Bill Kelsey then.
What's your number, Bill?
Eight one six, nine one six, nine six three six.
I will, when we get done with this meeting, I'll send you back to the office, thought I'd get a call.
Your son lives in Windsor, or?
Uh, he's actually in Tivo.
Tivo?
He's in, oh, no, I'm sorry, not Tivo, he's in Springfield. He's in Springfield.
Well, they start their zoning issue.
Yeah, yeah, they just started, they just got it.
Now, there's three of them used attorney out of Kansas City, I called him, he wasn't wanting to take on anymore.
Anymore? I know, I'm pretty sure that, uh, Chase used, he actually was a guy I went to school with years ago. Uh, he's up in Kansas City. But that's probably the number he's gonna get.
You don't know what attorney's name was?
Ted Beckett?
Ted Beckett.
I don't have Ted's number in this phone. Hmm, actually I do. These numbers, eight one six, four seven one, seven five zero zero. But I'll, I'll still have Chase give a hold of you.
Okay.
He can, he can walk you through whatever you want to do.
We need stop sign post up there for four hundred road there off AMM.
Okay.
So, somebody got into it.
And it's on four hundred?
Yes.
Stop sign gone too?
No, stop sign's still there, just been posted, so.
Yeah, we'll get it taken care of when it calls out.
Okay.
Just stick it down.
Well, I'm the one that got into it.
That's okay.
You get the bill, I don't bother with anything.
Ah, I've raised a road up there. So if you see tracks, blame me.
Oh, blame Ted.
Bill stay warm, man.
That will, you gotta go to the house.
See you later.
He was talking about that lady, windows down, not pick up there, can't get it down.
Oh, you can't, well, if it's gonna be somewhere, I'd rather have it up and down.
I don't know what happened, we had a problem with that truck there. Battery cable, I guess, messing up, so I don't know why I changed it, why, now I don't have no panel, like fuel gauge or anything. My windows don't work, truck runs a little. That's the main thing.
See you later, Bill.
Yeah, take care of it.
Thank you. Okay.
You ready for emergency?
Just jump in there.
Or, good, I need to get an email from you that for you guys, due to the fact, uh, there's a lot of stuff that the state sends me, but they copied you guys on it, especially when we're doing these bridge postings and all this stuff. Uh, that way you guys know, uh, the same information that I would get.
I did. I did. I think it's mmarson@handycam.com.
Did you send the two of them?
I sent it to Mark.
I think it's Mark L.
Mark L, is it Mark L?
I think it's just Mark L.
Okay. And Jake, Jake Brad, he had handy.
Mark L with Peter and Kevin?
Henry, C M O, K M O, dot com. Yeah, I sent the, how to, uh, log you into it, information. Uh, yeah, uh, business cards in the process for looking at. With the new cell phones, might put your cell phone on there for him, do you?
I got it live for you.
I'll put mine on there, I got a new one.
Just this once.
And you still have your one too?
Yeah. So guys, thanks for taking care of the site box, it looks good.
Not a problem, had to go over it two times yesterday, yesterday morning when we pulled off, it was just still falling sheet ice. So we treated everything, let it set, came back after lunch yesterday and did it again.
It refroze, we had a lot of people fall, but.
And it's gonna get slushy again this afternoon. And we can come up this afternoon and knock off a little more, but it's down to the point, it's just gonna thaw and freeze, thaw and freeze. Jake, down on southwest three fifty-one. This is gonna be in Fairview Township. We've got a bridge down there that I've been working with core of engineers for over a year, trying to get it replaced. Because when the water comes up, the lake comes up, it's in water, it stays in water, there ain't no way around. So we just wanted to go back with culverts, uh, six, uh, five to culverts, and we just want, want to put three of them in there. We had got it engineered and everything, and the engineer, engineers at all and all that. Well, to make a long story short, the core of engineers have came back and said, no, you're not doing culverts, you're gonna put a bridge back in there. And to me, with the bridge sitting underwater, anytime the lake gets up, you might as well just close the road at the lot, at the core of engineers lines, and the lake step, because it's not worth, because some of years it might sit underwater six months.
So is that what you want to do, is to close it?
If it comes down to the point that the bridge is, uh, unpassable or unsafe, then my recommendation is to close the road, at the core of engineers lines, otherwise we're gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars for a bridge, and it's gonna set underwater. I mean, the last two years it's been dry years, but, and we, even though it's been dry years, it's been underwater. Because it just sits down there in a swamp for a year.
I'm not sure that's we, that's not one, we, we are over it, from core of engineers, it's kinda like, uh.
Three hundred.
Three hundred.
The threshold.
Cause it really, when I, and one of the things I wouldn't do, when I were in this, couldn't happen.
That we have to use all the harbor, and we can't use no VRO.
And he said, no, you can't do it, and it was gonna cost, cost that, back then it was seven, eight hundred thousand. I remember that.
Is the three fifty-one bridge, is that a core bridge, or is that our bridge?
They say it's our bridge, but they're dictating that, well, we can go back.
We leased it from them, that's what, that's how they end up doing that stuff, that's why they have them over there, they leased it back to the county. And soon as they leased, the county leased it back, they closed it, said, no, it's dangerous. But years ago, if you remember the Minnesota Bridge, it collapsed years, well, that happened all at the same time, so they got worried, so they just closed it. And said, nope, no way, because the county was gonna go back in and rebuild the deck, fix it up, and make it last a while. Well, then come find out, I'll put in, see about getting a VRO out of it, nope, we can't use VRO funds for other funds, we're gonna pay the bridge. So therefore, it's up to us, and we didn't have that much money in the bank to do it, so, and we didn't have any choices. So that's the reason why we went ahead and.
That's sort of like the same thing down there at Brownington Bridge, we're in the old highway we went through. Here a couple of years ago, we went in there and finally just took the bridge completely out, closed the roads, because we don't have the funds to build them big bridges back. And then bridges go to nowhere, basically. So it's, it's hard to justify, putting a hundred thousand dollars in the bridge, it's gonna be underwater three to four months out of a year. And they're not allowing us to raise the road or anything, so the bridge is gonna be in the water whenever it does come up, and it's gonna stay in water. When, when, when it's gonna do the culverts, we had it engineered to raise the culverts and raise the road. Cannot raise the road one bit.
Now, I'm not for sure when we do this, to close it, we will have to take that bridge out. If it's like, see, they came back a few, several years ago, and they wanted us to do that one, they set it out, and we said, no, at the time, I never pushed it in. Somebody said, no, we'll bridge, and we closed down on, uh, old M, uh, Z.
Down by-
We, we had to take that bridge out.
And that, and that's what I would do with this one here, is take it out, because if you leave it in there, people are gonna go around the barricades, they're gonna cross the thing, and if it ever caves in, then we're in another loss.
How do you barricade those? How do you barricade?
The way, how I did it down there on, uh, at Brownington, since we had this new track hoe and, uh, driver, I drive piling every three foot apart all the way across the road, as wide as the easement is, that a way, they're having to trespass on somebody else to get around me.
And that's, and that's what you wanna have, if you take the bridge out, then there's no reason for you to cross it.
And just past that, little bridge here several years ago, they went in and, and built a bridge, but that thing's a mile out, out, out in there, and I mean, you go up and you come back. But that's again, one of them deals, they wouldn't let them raise the road, so regardless, the road floods. And that's another thing I would do, is take out both of those bridges, that a way you're eliminating the possibility of somebody driving down there, driving across them and trying to-
Try to jet across.
And end up surrounding or something stupid. But I just want you to be aware that we've been working on that, and I want you to take a look at it, and see if there's something you wanna try different, the, the, short of building a bridge, the core of engineers says it ain't gonna happen.
I'll go take a look at it, I'm about to get with you.
And sometime, when you guys got time, and it's not all icy and snowy outside, I'd really like to take you guys in some areas and show you the, these roads, that a way before you guys start changing the cart rock funds, you can see my point of aspect of why we gotta hold these townships accountable. Some townships you don't have to worry about, but there's other townships that's gonna take advantage of it, and if I don't have to do this, that, or whatever, that money's going in the bank. And I'd just rather see the money that we're giving these townships used on the roads, and it's not to be used for.
Fair enough. Yeah, I was wanting to get with you and ride around and talk to some, some of the people that I've been working on. Kinda get an idea of what you're seeing.
But, uh, in your area, the bridge on northwest, northeast, southeast, let me get this straight. Southeast one hundred, in Bestbyham Township, it's got a weight limit of twelve ton right now. It's going to be on this year's bridge replacement list for me.
That's the one just down from, from the cemetery bridge, ninety-one road?
Yeah.
Where it turns back?
Mm-hmm.
Goes back and it just-
The conservation, they built then a, a road around and down through the creek and back up and back out to the road, because they could get their flipping across.
They did that on Monkey Mountain too, didn't they?
Yeah.
So, a couple places, they, but that's the only way, and it'd be nice if we could get it, go in and get the bridge in.
And, uh, the bridge department sent out a list, uh, like comes last week, what bridges were gonna inspect on, uh, February, I got ahold of all the townships, told them January, or February or March, when their bridge is gonna get inspected. And about two weeks before that, if the bridges ain't cleaned off, I'm gonna clean them off and we'll bill them. Some of them was okay with it, matter of fact, one township told me to go ahead and clean his off, cause he ain't gonna mess with it. So, that's all I want. But, but again, I'm, I'm with the snow, but after Melton. But on that bridge, on that email, they sent me a bridge to make sure all of the bridges that are posted, are accurately posted, that a way we are not getting ruined up on those. So we're in the process of doing that today. So, you got anything from you, Mark? Jake?
Yes. Meeting, the minutes, uh, a while back, I, we wasn't here yet. Something about not splitting the invoice on the Bogart Township? We didn't wanna talk about that, or what, did you all already decide all this? Dennis didn't wanna split the invoice, but y'all was discussing splitting the bill for the project on Bogart Township.
It was up there on eleven, where we raised the road at.
I really don't know, I mean, we-
We talked, when we talked to the township, our deal was that it's gonna be a joint effort. We had the labor, and we had the thing, they was gonna have to pay for some rock. They did not wanna pay for the rock.
Okay.
But they was gonna, they paid to have all the dirt hauled in that they used off their cart rock road, so therefore, that dirt cost, not our cost.
Okay.
Because we spent thirty, over thirty-six thousand dollars in culverts up there, plus two and a half weeks of, or three weeks of work, of man hours, of ripping out the old bridges, putting in the new bridges, having to rework that whole road through there, because it was just like clumps, because they used a big scraper to haul it in. Now, what the previous commission decided to do on it, I don't know, but I told Amy, and I'm sure she passed it on to Rick, is, I feel like we've done our part.
Right.
I don't think we, they spent six thousand dollars to haul the dirt in, I spent a lot more than that out of my budget.
Okay. That is it, that's all?
They, that's one of the township, never mind.
We'll talk later.
Keep my opinions, what's up? Anything else, Jake?
That's it.
Jim, you got anything? Rick, you got anything?
I think you did a good job on part.
Not a problem, you guys have a good one.
Later.
Okay. Why am I always last? Cause I didn't get it just right.
Oh, Jake, I have your ID ready for you.
Thank you.
I just forgot to bring it.
I just forgot to bring it. Sitting on my desk. So, we dodged the bill with, with the storm, I think they're good Lord. About a hundred to two hundred feet up in there, it's about a half degree off, so... But we were ready, we had the fence and center all set up, generator out, got a...
Not a battery?
Yep. I brought a hundred extra beds in from Kansas City, sitting over there, ready to go.
I heard you had a bunch, did it die?
Yeah, we filled the, uh, warming center last night.
Oh, that's awesome.
So, I might take some more, more materials over for them today.
Do you need to take the beds back at some point?
They're gonna go down to Warsaw.
From here?
Warsaw?
They're gonna be stored there, so next time I need them, I won't have to drive back to Kansas City. I am gonna have to take the generator in some way of service.
Yeah, are you?
Yeah, there's a warning light on. It works, but there's a warning light. I can say, we had a company come in and they said, "Use the generator after filling," but not the one on the wheel.
Yeah.
It's the same one.
Okay.
I'll, I can get ahold of them and see if they'll come.
And if we do, we need to talk to somebody who's all moving that generator over there.
I, I think it'd be the same company.
Okay, that's all I'm saying. We can do it. Well, I, keep out, I bet money I got that phone number too. Because I think it'd be great to have that over here at the courthouse, and that'd be a backup for the courthouse.
So we did end up opening up a vending center, and I would have had the food ready for us again.
They did?
They were gonna donate the food.
Yeah. Generator, did you leave it over there or what?
I'm gonna go grab it today.
Go get it, okay, good.
We were about as ready as we could be.
Did you start it the other day and run it? Yes, what kind, what light was on?
It's a warning light about the load capacity, it's that we're gonna have to get it load tested and see. If, if you don't put a load on those things every year...
I wonder.
The capacitors, the capacitor and then the...
Yeah.
So, we have to, it hasn't been ran in years.
We need to have a check. I assumed that would be a check, it didn't even ring. The way I was told, it was checked every, every month.
One on wheels?
Yeah, the biggest one. And I, I was told, I didn't, those things will never assume that it's...
What, is it four years old in like ten hour time?
I think it's over that. I think, I know it's over that.
Yeah.
Huh? Yeah, it's on, it's on the ground now.
Yeah. It's nice, we just gotta keep...
Yeah, but it's supposed to be run, it's kinda like the sheriff and all them, they, they part of that religiously every time. Let it run and even kick it over to the, to the unit, over to the jail, to make sure that it wasn't... That has to be done. And I thought, the way I understood, it was being done. Oh, yeah, I, I seen that the other day, and I guarantee it, hadn't it? This one hadn't done it either. So... But I was surprised it part of that part, right? We didn't have any trouble once, other than the battery.
Yeah.
And I don't know, that battery might have worked a little bit, but I needed to try it out in cold weather.
They tested it, it was bad.
Huh?
I took it out and they tested it, it was bad.
Was it?
Mm-hmm.
Now, I never, uh, they get older and watch things.
Yeah, that one was six years old. I'll get with them and have to, with this, that, with this side one.
Yeah, yeah.
Even if it doesn't run, the oil needs to be changed. Probably original.
It doesn't even... I'm sure it's probably cleaned, but it's still...
I don't have anything else left, if y'all got anything?
No. I don't know of anything. I think I did a good job on that.
I didn't get the email at the courthouse post yesterday, so...
Yeah, you were gonna rip you over that. Oh, yeah?
I came to work.
Hey.
He's on another list.
He's on, yeah. And it's, it's the naughty list.
No, we're working on it.
I didn't have to worry about it, I thought it was a lot of, that's just, I knew this was a weather, it was gonna be a weather.
I'll be right back.
Yeah, so, uh, if anybody calls in and asks about the sidewalks, I had sulfurous crime scene tape on every single one of them. They're too dangerous to walk up. Ronnie has wet and got twenty more bags of ice melt. Ace Hardware, there we have eight pallets. We're supposed to get this again Thursday, Friday?
Thursday, Friday.
I feel like we should probably get more.
Yeah.
Yep.
I told him not to clean out Ace Hardware so that the public would be able to buy some salt too. But, yeah, one word I'm sure we can get stocked back up the next day or so.
I don't know. But I feel like we shouldn't wait till Friday to get it.
I... I broke that up, Kelly.
Well, he said he had twenty-three bags or something he started with, and when I got here this morning, he only had one because you, they used it yesterday. And so those twenty bags, they've already tried to re-salt and all that's mounted up there, it's just gonna melt again, straight on the sidewalk.
We had a deal on our sidewalk, we threw out ice, ice melt, and we let it sap. Then we shovel off some, we saw it, let it sap, that's what I had to do. The track loader, we pushed all the snow, and anyway, that just, I brought it in, we brought it in the day, day before. I said, "Jeff, we don't need to try to pull that in down or whatever, we need it."
Doing any lumbering or something?
Uh, they called around and that Ace was the only place they had any, and the melt that we needed. And they said they had eight pallets, that's what I said. But I don't feel like we should remove the tape until this gets, because it's just gonna keep doing the same thing.
You know what, we should have told them this about that, because probably we need to, if we get to salt it down and we can clean off some, we saw it, we think, we need it cleaned off before we get the next one.
Right, but every time you clean it off and then you salt it, those mounds that are right next to it are melting back and then at night they're freezing over again, because it's pushed up on the sides.
Uh, can we push that over a little bit? And we end up...
Physically remove the ice that's possible.
That's what I was thinking there. If you get a bone off, let it rest, right? I don't know, I'm just talking. But that's how we had to do ours yesterday, and then we made it all right, but then we had a little green, Jeff, I know it's...
That's what I'm...
You got a mound, but I think we could take the track loader, set it down, the fly pot stuff, we may, we could get it down, but anyway, that'd be a problem.
Well, the ground should be hard enough to make us push it down at least in the sidewalk.
If we get it pushed out, that, that may be something we can handle.
I think we should keep the sidewalks closed until something is figured out.
I don't recall Dennis, have we got the salt? Have we got the salt yet?
Yes.
Who picked it up?
He did, we, we got the salt, they've already salted it and I saw them out scraping it in ago, which is great, but I'm more worried about the refreeze and...
Who's out there, just, uh...
We have Ronnie and Cheryl here today.
I wonder...
And we did have three individuals fall on the south side. Uh, one lady bumped her head, pretty good.
Well, okay.
I have her name and phone number in the office.
That's a problem.
Also, I delivered a good budget to...
Call Dennis.
I, I felt like we should go ahead and find that space and get that. I wonder if you wait, everybody might be waiting.
Hey, Dennis. Hey, Kelly just come out, he's gonna have a lot of, we're having a lot of issues with sidewalks. And we was wondering, they finally got some more salt. And they've salted some down, I didn't know how many he was. Maybe y'all can maybe sit out trying to help and get it, if we can, maybe get that. And we don't wanna live in a pile of snow where it melts, goes over the sidewalk, refreezing it. Well, um, the sidewalks, we're some deal with now. Kelly, let somebody fall and hit your head.
He's sitting there.
Well, they got it taped off.
He didn't make it very hard.
See what we can. We have plenty of salt, maybe give it salted, like I like my lead, but one moment, salt, we have to get it again. Okay, thank you.
Oh, they just, they just, they get all day. I didn't walk up and ever through the snow. And what little bit is, goes into the shaded area. It's just not safe, that's all.
Get it down a little bit. It's loose. Just like in the...
I always had students at office, that's why I like them.
I, well, I can always find larger, Dennis, all we gotta do, a lot of scots down it, and there's a little kitchen there.
I gave him a popcorn machine, so it always fresh popcorn.
Uh, how you coming, Louis? You haven't done anything, eh?
Not very good, oh, yeah, we have.
Have you?
Yeah, I need a dumpster to finish throwing stuff away.
Do you?
No, I'm not, I'm slowly dumping into the dumpster.
Say, you wanna fill up a dumpster?
Say again?
You wanna fill up a full dumpster?
I've been doing that for a while.
I need to be the gal, but we gotta need to make sure that a parking lot is for the public and not for the courthouse. Because if we are closing these sidewalks now, you know, we need, they, the public needs to have access to the courthouse through the parking lot that's out there.
It's not better, much better than the sidewalk?
It is better.
It's getting there.
We gotta get them locked.
Okay.
Now, well, I know, that's what I said, that's where, some things, just like hand, you have to get that set up right so we can make it work. But that's... And the bad thing is, in your normal days, usually got plenty of places to park. Just like a sensor time, time now, a lot of people bring that house, we're gonna have assessments. Learn them in, and I'll do that for them online, but, but business, you have plenty of money, it's... I'm gonna ask James, we got a new boy down there.
He's had like thirty-four.
I know, that's what I was, I was, he's a worker down there.
Thursday, Friday's supposed to be mainly snow, not ice this time, so...
It's supposed, uh, one day...
It looks like it's gonna drag more to the south.
We get one day, then it's warmed up.
Yeah.
And maybe we can get a river, some of it anyway.
Yeah, we're supposed to get to like...
Squeeze it around. Yep.
This morning, I think. The only thing else I have is we got, uh, this lady, wants you guys to call her, she has a complaint in the duck of jail. We always try to explain to people that call with this, that there's nothing you guys can do about that. But still, still they wanna visit with you about whatever her issue is.
Who's out, Louella? Sam, Sam Niski?
Brisky, I think.
Huh?
The Brisky?
The Brisky?
Yeah.
His mom?
I don't know.
I never heard of him.
Okay. Thank you.
That'll be easier to do. Yeah, you leave it. People learn their deal with it, that's what you do in Toronto. There's just too much snow up there.
The number you dial, man.
Louella, this is Jim Stone, Indian County, Nevada Township. Uh, we're in session now, if you could, you can give us a call back and, uh, I'll speak to you in a minute. If, uh, you can call back at six at zero, eighty-five, seventy, zero-two. Thank you.
I'm straight into her voice.
That's all I have for you guys.
Can I retain the motion? Show them the motion.
Second, first amendment, second to the jury. Uh, all the members, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion, here, move your... I'm here, ask Bruce, Bruce, did you have anything to say? And I'm sorry.
Time, you can take that forty-five minutes. Time for everyone these days.
He wants his five minutes there to...